I'm going to call the Dunbar Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Thursday, April 19th. All three selectmen are present. Tom Administrator is present. And Leo Martell is recording for the public. And we also have a new addition. I basically have Jennifer King who's joining us, being a reporter, a secretary, recording secretary for the night. Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, we have to move business first. It's a minute. Dave, it's on me, you for the minutes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the April 12th, 2018 meeting minutes as amended.
I'll second it.
Very well written.
Thanks, Lee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bob, it's kind of strange because we're going to let Mark say it.
I don't want to wait for him. He's being quiet.
I wouldn't say anything. I wasn't here, so we'll make the decision.
Okay, I'm going to start off by opening up a public comment. Let's have the Chief of Police here joining us. Chief Scoot. Okay, I'm going to take it back to the board. And as I said, the first thing I was doing was the introduction of Jennifer. And I said that already, so welcome again, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Any comments? This is her first night, and we made a decision to hire you, make Dave and I, a week ago. And I have a tendency to go fast sometimes. I get, shall we say, corralled in by my fellow selectmen. But if you have questions as we go along for the minutes, just feel free to stop and ask.
Okay.
Okay, Tom, business. I'd like to, the first thing that's on the agenda is we have, since last week, the last two weeks, we had two eye injuries at the transfer station. I have here the injuries of the two employees. And I think it's maybe time we start talking about when using equipment, maybe we should consider some mitigation.
Some eye glasses?
Yeah, I'm thinking that. Safety glasses. And...
Might not be a bad idea. I didn't think it was that big a deal, but we got two.
But then one of the vans slipped off, caught me in the left eye. I mean, vans slipping off is kind of a...
Very dangerous.
Exactly. He's lucky to have his eyes still. And the other one was on cardboard. It fell off the counter. But there's no reason why they can't wear safety glasses on the front counter.
I'd like to make sure that if we do implement it, we work towards getting a good quality set of clear safety glasses that they actually want to use and not something that's going to...
Clear with the shields on the side.
Yeah. Like to get ones that they're going to use and not a cheaper set that they just keep setting aside because it's going to do us no good.
No. The trouble with the cheap sets you're wearing for two hours, they hurt around the ears and they don't look well. We end up taking them off.
Do you think we have the department head look into them and then bring a couple of examples to us to approve?
Yep. And the thing is, I'd like to get, I think, I would be all right for me if he bought, if he purchased a couple of samples.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Let the employees try them out, too.
Yep.
So I'd say look at four.
And then come back to us with a recommendation.
Based on his trial. Yeah. So I'd say pick up maybe at least four samples, he can purchase them, and then let his crew try them out and see which ones he recommends and then comes back to us. Okay. We've got a consensus there, I think, Lee. So the action item is...
Have the department head purchase a few samples and try them out and then bring back a recommendation to the board?
Correct. All right, the next item on the agenda is, let's talk about our wireless phone plans we have. We have a request for an upgrade and why we need an upgrade on that.
Okay, I did, I think I've CC'd you on the email. So basically, I was contacted by the rep from Verizon who represents all of our phone lines. And he said that Woody was looking for an upgrade and I didn't think anything of it, but it required some in-house authorization within the Verizon software or whatever. So I went in and did that and then immediately got the request for to place or authorize the purchase of a new phone. My concern is, and I don't think it's within my realm, there's a, it's a one, it would be a one-year contract, and then if for any reason the board decides to cancel the phone, then there's a $175 fee for early cancellation. And then it's a little bit different than the existing plan. So you could see a bill that's attached on the back. The different departments have their breakdown of their phone charges to their department. So currently, he's in the $50 range. This would put him at close to 65. I don't know what the phone involves, whether it's a data plan, if it's a...
Lee, do you know how many phones the ambulance and fire have?
I want to say that there's probably at least four. I don't know. They've got one in each ambulance.
Chief yours are all on a different plan?
We have three. Verizon, they are on a different plan.
You're on, they're on a different plan.
What kind of phone did he ask for?
I don't, it's on that first page, it's a description of...
Q7? Same phone.
Now, how old is his phone? It looked pretty old the last time I actually saw it.
Well, no, that's a fairly new phone. It's less than two years old. I think that it got replaced once recently because the other one didn't work or broke or something.
You know that the functions on mine seem to work good for about two years, but I have a ton of use on mine, but after that, the functions seem to start breaking down as a whole.
Question, what do they need the phones for, the yard communication back and forth?
I don't know that there's any use for internet or anything.
I think his, when he talked to us last time about this, in case he was using the truck and, you know, bringing the recycling material while his guys were working, if they had questions, they could communicate.
Right, so it's communication. I understand.
And/or if he broke down.
I understand. And they have simple phones that you can use to text or talk.
Yep.
And then if you want to upgrade, so you can use it for whatever you want to do. Now, this is different because the police department is probably a little bit different than some of the other departments where Jeff's phone is probably just so people can get a hold of him.
Correct. That's a personal phone.
And it's, but my point is, if you're going to upgrade, I don't see benefit to the town that has a computer at the same place that you could do some of the things on your phone.
Yep.
So you don't have to play with a phone to have that.
Yep.
Or you're duplicating whatever you're doing.
I was hoping that he would be here tonight to explain the contract and the need for that phone.
You know, so as far as, you know, the way I look at it, I know because I was forced a long time ago when we did work way up in the North Country, had to break down and get a cellphone. But it was just for communication so people could get a hold of me back and forth. And it seems like, the last time we talked to Woody, that was the highlight of his testimony was they needed that to call back and forth to get things done. So I don't know what all the apps or whatever he needs or the upgrades are, but if that's something that's for his personal...
Hey, Bob?
Yeah?
I just, it looks like he's upgrading the phone, but there's only a 99 cent charge. So the phone cost, it's an upgrade of the phone, which is allowed for the plan at no cost. It looks like the monthly access went up by $13 a month because there's no phone charges here, they're all zeroed out. So the monthly access is 6409 as opposed to his other one was $50.59.
Right. Well, my point is you're going beyond communication to whatever you want to do with the phone for yourself. And to me, it's a bit different than the fire department or the police department.
I don't see any...
Doesn't break it down.
Doesn't break it down. The only, all these are all zeroed out, too, so it looks like they might have just changed our monthly fee. Do we have his old phone?
That is underneath where the pink flag is, that's the old phone bill. And that's, I don't know if it gives a breakdown, whether it has gigabytes or if it has...
No, because it was, he broke it down by department here, I see. There we go. 48 of 7 plus the $1 fees, so 50, 59 is, right. And it looks like monthly usually is 178. Boys' plan, 215. It looks like the only charge I see on here is a $10 charge for family and friends.
So it must be the technical phone that is bringing it up.
If you see it's at 50, 59, it's going to be 60.
Because Pete has one of those just regular flip phones or the little generic.
I don't know, I like to defer any decision, I don't think we have to make any decision on it.
Yeah, I just did, I thought he would be here.
Could you get us a cost from Verizon of the different plans they have? In other words, if you're just communicating with...
This is the only fee I see right here.
I think when I had checked the last time you guys discussed this, they said it would decrease his cost at $50 by $10. And so no action was taken to change it or ask him to change it, but I don't know if it's broken, if it's cracked, if it needs, you know, to be replaced, if it's not working.
The thing is, the only thing with the cellphones, the batteries are now sealed. After so many, so many years, batteries, if you either replace the battery or it's sometimes easier to get an upgrade or just get a new battery with a new phone. It works well that way. But again, does he need a smartphone? Okay, as Bob suggested, just a regular phone for communication. I think that the latter is what's...
Well, let me, let me just try and clarify a little bit. The upgraded phone is zero, like we talked about. So it looks like the monthly access went up, and I see that on this plan that's shown here, family and friends got added for $10. So why don't we see if we can eliminate that and we keep this monthly fee at least the same?
Is that what changed with family and friends?
Yeah. That's the only change I can see is a $10 add for family and friends.
And that just allows you to call other people.
Do you want me to find different plans?
Yeah, I'd just like to know what the different plans are.
He might be able to get the upgraded phone and have a different plan that keeps him at the same cost, right?
Yeah.
That's what I'm shooting for. Because the thing is, phone doesn't...
And then, and then again, because I think this came up, you were a selectman then.
Yep.
And I think Brian was there, because we talked about this once before, looking at the phone plans. But again, trying to reach person for communication is one thing. And then upgrading the phone so you can, you know, have the apps or whatever you want to do, you're duplicating services you have when you have the computer. So if it makes it more cost-effective to use a different plan that doesn't include that, and if they want to upgrade to that, then let them know that the difference in the upgrade, which might be $15 or maybe $20, they can pay for.
Is that a, the four gig, is that something you have to get with that kind of phone?
Most of the smartphones have a four gig.
They have to have...
They don't have to, but they're either three gig or four gig.
Do they need a gig network to support the internet?
Correct.
Can you give a value-added comment?
Yes. If you, if you rely on text messaging as part of your communications, if you haven't done any extensive text messaging on the flip phone or a small phone versus a smartphone, it's a, it's a different ballgame. A large message gets sent in packets, and sometimes they get mixed up and it's very difficult to text with a flip phone as opposed to texting with a, with a regular smartphone. I, I know that because my, my wife has a flip phone and it's always a challenge back and forth with her phone.
And he did say, I guess when he wasn't here, that he did do texting on extra people out there on Saturdays and changing cars.
I have no problem with getting a new phone, but the thing is, just, just go get the plan.
Yeah, I think so, too.
So my concern was that if I approved this, we're committed for a year. And if we terminate early...
I think that when you upgrade, all companies are going to ask you...
Is that the standard? Okay. I've had mine for like six years, I won't step up, but that's okay.
No, but if it's, if it's a free upgrade, then I said we should take advantage of that because it allows a better battery life, a little lower...
I think that's his intention, because under the, he borrowed the state bid, under the state contract, I think they allow an upgrade every nine months or every year. So that's a way to keep the phone running.
Yep. I totally agree. Okay, we'll just continue discussion on that next, next meeting.
Okay.
All right, next item is, Alene, you're going to give us a little update on RFP for painting.
Okay, it's probably two-thirds done. Unfortunately, I was working on another project that's been put on hold. I know, Mike, you asked me to start working on the ordinances and updating that. I do have all that information in my inbox, but Dan Scoot has to review them for contents before I present them to the board. So until I get his response from that, I'll put that on hold.
Just to let you know, Chief, Chris did a fantastic job. Officer Chris did a great job on preparing them last fall. And the thing is, we pushed it quickly last year because we thought, we had, we were working on the assumption they had to go before the voters.
Right.
And that was the driving force. So we took a delaying tactic because it didn't have to go in front of the voters. And now we said we'd readdress it after the town meeting. That's why we resurfaced it again. We want to get them implemented. There's a lot of hard work that he put into it.
And I know he gave you a lot of information.
Yeah.
And you're really need to look at content.
Understood. The thing is, it's worthwhile to get a good review, have all eyes on the subject, and we'll just put that on the agenda for maybe next week.
Okay.
Okay.
If for some reason you can't get to it next week, just let us know and we'll pull it from the agenda.
Yep.
Okay, we definitely be better.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to go for the inbox now. The first thing I have is, we haven't got an answer. Alene did send out an email. I think we got copied on this one. This is for someone doing job shadowing at the transfer station. No response back on that.
Well, all he did reply is that it wasn't necessary to follow up with it. So I wasn't sure if he was going to be here, if he needed to talk to you about it.
Okay. So we'll let it, we'll let that go, let it drop off the scope because it's no longer an issue. We have a Ethics Committee. There's going to be additional upcoming training on Monday, May 7th, at 7:00 PM at the Dunbar Town Library for approximately one hour. It's going to start promptly. Put that on the...
Yeah, the adjustment will do that. It's already on there.
Okay. Just an FYI, and George Sucey, who's our, shall we say, lobbyist for dealing with utilities and utility easements, utilities taxes assessments, he's out of the network. He's working right now at the Merrimack County Courthouse. And again, the utilities are trying to lower their taxes, the tax impact across all communities and making it even across all communities. And he's representing us in that project. And I just want to say that it could affect us negatively. And that's why it's important that we don't over-rely upon those tax revenues because they're potentially at revenue jeopardy.
Now, Lee, we had asked a question, I think, a few weeks back in reference to the new steel poles that they're putting in. Did he respond back and say that that would increase our revenues to the town or not?
It would, but I, just from experience, I would say it will, but he did not respond back on that. And again, what's happening is they feel that whenever they compare their assessing values to our assessors' values, it's like a third of what, and what they're basing their numbers on is a formula that the DRA implemented back in the 40s for utility values, but that formula has never been increased over the years. So this is requiring both parties to get together, try to come up with a middle ground that everybody can be happy with. But it could affect us negatively with having to return.
And what department of the town do we work with to make sure that they're aware of the new steel structures going in, the Assessor's Office?
Yep. Anything that comes through, there's a form that the utility companies are required to complete, it's called the PA 28. And as soon as those come in, they usually send them to us certified mail. We will scan them to send Sucey so that he is aware that there's progress being made on those parcels or utility values.
Okay.
It's managed through my town, but it's controlled by the Assessor at the end.
But I, it goes back to the point, as we prepare budgets, it's good not to become over-reliant upon those revenues because if we are over-reliant and not taking a conservative but more liberal view, we come up short at the end of the year.
Yeah, my thought was if we watch the new poles go in and keep a good eye on it, maybe if they reduce the revenues over all, the new pole structures going in might offset it. And that might be our only opportunity to keep it even, so I want to keep an eye on that.
Exactly. But it not only affects Fairpoint, which has a very few telephone poles in town, it also affects electrical utilities, but also Dunbar Telephone assessments, too. Okay, moving on. I'm going to open up a public comment again.
Still nothing.
Good. I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the Board of Selectmen. I'm going to stop with you, Dave. Got anything else?
Um, I just wanted to state, for the record, I stopped by and reviewed the function of the library door in the back, and it seems to be functioning much better. And the threshold doesn't appear to be rubbing at this time. I'm not sure if some swelling went down underneath it or it just started to wear in a little bit better and it's really operating nicely now. And I don't think there's any need to adjust that threshold.
You know, Dave, as you come in on the right-hand side, you know, there's a new gutters put up and there's a small splash guard there?
I saw your recommendation to increase that. I would not only increase that splash pan, but I think that that gutter that comes down, Mike?
Yep.
Should go to the other side of the roof so that most of the water isn't coming down right near the door anyway. Because when it falls in the new gutter?
Yep.
It comes down right by the side of the door.
On the right-hand side.
Yeah. So I'm thinking that gutter should extend to the roof on the other side.
So when he comes in to inspect the work, ask him to see, to move that gutter along the building towards the, oh, the end, towards the parking lot.
Well, what happens is a doghouse dormer for the basement door there.
Mm-hmm.
And the gutter dumps out on the roof on the left-hand side of that doghouse dormer. And I think it should turn and go down the right-hand side of that doghouse dormer. Now, that's the other selectmen will look at it tomorrow when they go in.
Yeah.
And then we'll look at it again next week. But I'm thinking that instead of putting the additional water on the left side of that doghouse dormer, that gutter downspout, get extended to the right side of that roof.
Okay.
So it comes from the top roof over the entranceway.
Yep.
It comes down on the left side of the doghouse dormer.
Right.
To go to the basement, it should go to the right side.
With, with a basement door.
So maybe it's a right. When you inspect it or look at it, can you have Mary get involved with you so that if somebody else is there?
She could be aware, what we're talking about, yeah.
She can point out exactly what's going on.
What I noticed, what I noticed when it was raining the other day, the new door was still getting a splash, a little bit of splash from the rain coming out the roof.
Yeah, I reviewed that with Mary, too. I agree that bigger splash pan would help, but I think that some of the water needs to go on the other side of the roof.
Gotcha.
Okay. Now, who did we have do that last year?
It was a...
Builders.
Yeah, builder, it was very reasonable.
So I think if we haven't adjusted, we should have them come back to do that work, whether it's the splash pan and or the gutter.
Will they call them?
Yep. After these guys review it.
Okay.
We'll, we'll bring it back up for the town next week.
Because I hate to have that new door get, I saw it getting wet and I think, oh, geez, brand new door, I don't want to get destroyed.
The only other thing that was brought up to me this week by a resident was our commercial building inspections aren't being done by our town building office. They're requesting that an outside agency come in and do commercial building inspections. And this was brought up on one of the new commercial horse barns and arenas in town.
Mm-hmm.
And this particular resident said it cost him an exorbitant amount of money to bring in outside sources to do the inspections because his building was deemed commercial. And so he had to bring them in and provide it to the town. I wasn't aware that we were doing that.
I think it was probably a decision of the board.
Planning board.
Planning board was second.
And how did the inspection decision from the building department become part of the planning board?
I'd have to ask Ken Swayze to check, chime in on that.
What I need is, I need to know if the planning board is driving our building department or if the building department is driving. They should be two separate entities. And I want to make sure that the planning department isn't superseding the building department because we have another commercial structure going on right now, which we have a review that we're going to look at. Here, the town is putting up the school building. And I'm looking at all these inspections now being done by our building inspector. And these are the same type of inspections that would have been done on that building.
I don't understand the full logic behind the chairman's, I'd like to get the chairman to chime in on that and make a...
What I want to make sure is that our, our planning board is not superseding and taking over the responsibilities of our building department. And that if they have a question with the building department, they should come to us and ask. Because I was unaware that we were asking for outside sources from anybody for inspections. And that costs this resident a substantial amount of money. And if we're going to do it on one project, we need to do it on all projects for the town.
Well, the only other commercial one which they brought in, they had, was the antenna for the communications?
And they had to do the same thing.
They had to do the same thing.
They had their own inspectors.
Which is part of the...
But now we're, we're doing the town elementary school, commercial building structure, and we're doing the inspections. So...
Well, that's why I asked Jeff openly in the meeting what it was expected of us because there's some areas, and because it's under the life safety, require the state to get involved in other departments.
And I don't mind the state getting involved, Lee. Don't misunderstand me. Like, on this, on this school...
What delineates the commercial versus residential and who gets involved in what? Who's driving the decision?
That should be determined by our building department, our co-official. It shouldn't be derived from the planning board.
I'd like to get some clarification on Ken before we...
Or even from Mike. I, I guess it would be Mike, if, if he made this determination based on the...
It should be Mike Minsky's, I mean...
Mike Cummings.
Mike Cummings' decision, not the planning board decision. Now, this resident seems to believe that this was driven from our planning board.
Oh, absolutely, it was.
Not from our building.
It was, absolutely was.
So my question is, if we did it on that project, why aren't we requiring the school to do it?
Because they're exempt, starts.
Why are they exempt?
I know that they're...
Their inspections aren't exempt.
Correct. But Jeff said that he would work with us to make sure that they have somebody on site to do the inspections that Mike is not qualified to do. And I think the start of the project, you guys, the board asked Mike to go, go move forward with the inspections when it was related to the footings, the foundation, and the basic site work before we started putting up.
Now, just like on the elementary school, they probably need a electrical inspector to check it out.
Yeah, that's required because the fire marshal has to get involved, yeah.
The same thing could have been done on this project as well, free of charge to the homeowner, he had to pay for an independent inspection.
There, there is some precedent for, precedent for that. And I, I don't want to speculate because I don't have the knowledge in front of me. The thing is, I'd like to get Ken to chime in on that. And I'd like to pose the question for the Ken. Why, those, why was it required of a commercial entity, such as what was presented, to bring in inspectors?
I want clarification to make sure that our building department is working on it and not being driven by the planning board.
Understood.
I'll ask Mike that, too.
There was a, that is a little bit of controversy because they, they came in with the building project already, just to let you know, FYI, I know who you're talking about. And it's been, since then, they've paid a lot of dollars to get that building project set. And then they, since it was approved, they've already scoped back, so it's no longer commercial and it's going to be for private use. And so there's, the planning board is now in containment, some, Alene, help me out here, some potential refunds to the dollars, refunds to the gentleman involved.
But that would be related to the planning board application.
Right. And so it's, it's still a work in progress. And at this point, it has not been approved since last night. They wanted to discuss the steps to get that building, what it needs to get like a partial use approval. And the biggest thing right now, regardless of whether commercial or private, it's the outside structure, the outside landscaping and site work needs to be completed because there's some, several drainage issues which the road agents are very conservative. And if those are addressed, they'll probably get a partial use permit and continue on. But it's been scoped down in size since the original application.
Yeah, I don't, I don't care about any of that, Mike. All I care about is if we do something to one residential landowner in town, we need to do it for everybody. And it needs to be consistent and it needs to be driven by the building department, not the planning department.
If, if it's not, I need to verify and ask why if there's RSA driving it or not. The thing is, I'll verify that, I'll pose that question to Ken, I don't have the knowledge with me right now. Okay, so we'll just pose that question for now. Okay, anything else?
No.
Bob, to you.
I just got back, so I don't have anything.
Okay. All right, I did have, we have a non-public, I'm coming back to you, Lean, in a moment. I do have a report, it was in the mailbox too, it's concerning the, I asked Mike to let us know, keep us informed as far as progress that he's making as far as inspection of the school.
That was a very nice report.
I asked him for that, and I said, I also told Michael that, I said, if there's problems, raise it, don't sit on it. Let us know early on in the process so we don't have to do a knee-jerk reaction in addressing it. But he's been, that's just a summary of what he's been doing. And he also, we distributed it to the planning board last night, just to clarify, for courtesy. Okay, Lean, to you.
Okay, I just have a couple of things. Dave, you brought up the joint loss meeting that you attended a couple of weeks ago, and we've made a lot of progress with those repairs. Ernie Gang has already been to the police department to do some electrical. I believe he's done the same with the fire department. And John actually found an additional item that he needed addressed. I've contacted Keegan Westbrook Construction, he's local. He did the metal roof at the transfer station last fall, last summer. And I asked if he was interested in repairing the siding and their building and asked him to what extent he's able to do other menial repairs. He said he would look at my list and he's definitely could look and take care of a lot, address the other items on the list. And so he will do that probably before the end of the week. He's not sure how available or how quick he'll be able to get to the work because he's tied up in one job that's gonna take at least three to four weeks before he's available. But if he has like a rainy day or a small, a short day, he can definitely fill in in, in the town here, and he would be glad to do that. So his quote last time was very reasonable.
The transfer station is not working too.
Lean, John Wigan had stated to me that he does have one partial box of siding left.
Yep, I told him that.
And if we could get the name and manufacturer of that so we know what the siding will at least run.
Can't be that expensive if ice, if ice broke.
And where he works with siding and roofing and whatnot and repairs, I'm sure he's familiar with that. But I did tell him that we had one or two boxes laying around, that it's a simple, it's a plain gray that he can match it pretty easily. But I asked him that, when he's available, that I'll make sure someone can walk him through all the different things that we need to have, even if it's Mike, Mike knows, he went on that sidewalk, so he'd be able to point out all those things. So we're seeing some progress. And then next Monday, we have the company that Mike had reached out to for the asbestos testing, and that's scheduled for next Monday, eight AM.
Okay.
So we'll get.
We'll find out.
Well, we see Bob's test validates the experts.
Did you ever get that to go up, Bob?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay. We were talking about who was screaming like a little girl.
Okay, all right, I think we can make a, a motion. We're gonna go in non-public for RSA ninety-one dash alpha, colon, three, number two, paragraph alpha.
Roman numeral.
Two.